Thank you for joining us this evening for the Winters to Complicated. Co-sponsored by the Winters Express and Democracy Winters. It's a nonpartisan organization dedicated to strengthening democracy, protecting constitutional freedoms, and promoting informed engagement of local, state, and national politics. My name is Kate Vlade. I'm a member of the Democracy Winners Committee and a co-mente. And will be a moderator for the first half of this event. Winters' Press Editor-in-Chief and former Winters' Member Crystal Vlade will moderate the second half. And Shep Parker of the D W students committee and current Winters committee is our in-question Chair for taking any questions submitted for the community. The seats currently held by Mayor Lee Towne and Council Members Sarah Rangerson and Erin Neath are the seats in place for the November 8th electors. But while the incumbents are not running, we are lucky to have five community members who have stepped up and they're running for these. So with recent votes, voters can vote for two candidates. Each candidate will now have twenty seconds to introduce themselves with their name and position tells or doc titles. And this is not the time to get into issues. Brian Bellamy, our current timekeeper, will set the timer clock for seven. The numbers will turn from green to yellow when you have five seconds left. When time is up, the numbers will turn agenda. Brian will hold up a card saying ten, and I will indicate that the next speaker that will have. For introductions, we will start on the candidate's left audience member race. And then move down the line. So when Brian, right? Race. All right. So we go with the end.
My name is Michael Winters. I've been a resident in Yellow County. Oh, I've been a resident in Yellow County since nineteen seventy-five. Moved here in Winters in two thousand and two. My wife and I have been participating in the community for several years. My wife's the coach for drill soccers here at the high school. I do coaching the high school.
Thank you. And he's. Wait for him to reset.
Hi, my name is Lisa Baker. I'm running for one of the three council seats. I am the former Chief Executive Officer of Yellow Housings for Vice Chair of the Winners Planning Commission. I served on the local boards, including the Food Free Council, and have been sponsoring in the community for many months.
Good evening. I'm Albert Viasio. I've been sitting in Winters for forty-two years. I've served as the planning commissioner, tree treating commissioner, board of a housing steering committee member. And for the past seven years, I've been a member of the Standing Advisory Committee. My professional background is a building professional for forty-plus years.
Thank you, Albert.
I'm Richard Kasevackian. I was a mission officer in the U.S. Army California National Guard for ten years. Ended up working in state headquarters, an MBA from Lucy Davis, and currently work for a healthcare company that manages the provider network for the county's medical population during business developments and financial analysis.
Hello, I'm Carol Siana. Our family and I have been working for forty-two years. I retired from the city of Winters, which was newly opened as an environmental center. And I've been involved in numerous, I've run pockets and very similar things. Well, we actually have a four years of doing these ones.
Thank you all for your. And I'll now take a few minutes to go over the forum guidelines and how the in-person online attendees and questions. The planning committee and the event co-sponsors of the finance event to be a nonpartisan impartial forum. And I'll underscore that it is a forum, not a debate. And the goal is for community members to learn more about candidates and their positions before passing appointments. Seating an answer order was determined using a random list generator. All candidates will answer all questions. In the first half, candidates will answer six questions prepared maybe drafted based on community input. And candidates got these questions on Tuesday evening so that they could research and issues prepare their answers. Although we have asked the candidates not to read their answer for data. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes for a finished answer. And in the end of the segment, at fifteen minutes, the numbers, there are probably fifty seconds remaining. The numbers on the timer clock will turn from green to yellow. Brian will hold up the fifteen card. And when time is up, the numbers will turn agenda. Brian will hold up the card. So then, and I will indicate the next speaker has something for. For audience members and a community-based version for each question will be available on the chart that's right over here. And after the first part of this forum, we will take it five minutes. After that, Crystal will moderate the unity Q and A sort of section. Available feature questions submitted by online and in-person attendees. So the base will be snappy, and the attendees will have one minute to answer each of those questions. So that we can get through more and hear from more of the public.
First, I didn't get to this. We have never.
They were, the questions were emailed to all candidates by our candidates. And so let's see. So I'll ask.
What do you mean to ask her?
Yeah, I'll say, I'll say, I'll say the question. And so.
Oh, I guess.
So online and in-person who would like to sign questions, here's the deal. If you are here in the room, you have access to index cards. And our question gatherers, Lucy Chris and Chris Purvis, can help you out with this. If you have a question and you need a card or a pen, you can wave your hand or they'll bring something over to you or probably just pass it down the road for you. You can then write it on the card. You can wave your hand to us and then for Chris, we'll go to the end of the row. And for online attending, if you are attending via Zoom, you can put your question in the Q and A function on Zoom. And for those of us who are joining us via the Beats on Democracy on the Facebook. And Shep will be fielding the Zoom questions and our online question gatherer and written will be copying the ones from Facebook. So the time for submitting questions, I guess, is seven P M. So it's starting here. And for those of you who want to submit questions. And so planning committees then compile the questions and select for the second half of the forum from those. We may blend questions or rephrase for revenues. Questions most likely to be used are those that are related to issues relevant to the city council. That do not require right or wrong answers and are not designed specifically to help or harm any candidate. And the moderator will ask the questions. After that, each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. And for that, you'll begin with fifteen minutes warning, and Crystal and Brian will let you know when and where the topic starts. And we request that the audience feel an upholding enthusiasm but hold their applause. And so, all right.
Right now, it's.
So the, using our random list generator, we're going to start at this end. And with each, they're asking, we're going to go down the line of who gets the, what it's written first. So that everybody gets. Winters General Plan is thirty years old, but it still are guiding documents. Do you believe the existing general plan is still strong, or should it have been per se rooted up? Why or why not?
Um, well, definitely no doubt. Kind of not want to use those resources back in the city. I think the city happened, it's a job of paving, any master plan, water, sewer, circulation, housing. So other than standard document, yeah, we have been upgaving and repairing parts and pieces. But there is the question of Measure A, the one of Winters, which should have been passed a couple of years ago. Clearly, the majority of residents are wanting a voice and parents do not. And so that property in North County, where most of the people have to go, is in play whether or not they don't have forty minutes. So definitely needs a reexamine and reevaluate zoning and land use. Given the stagnation and growth that people may expect may not happen in any time. So definitely you look at things and see the direction that we want to go now. We need to change graphic names, zoning, and loans, and down the road. And I think a general plan update would be a great idea. I would definitely save up some money for that. It's okay.
So I think general plan is one of the foundation for everything else that we want to do. Like you guys said, the plan probably is not date thirty years old and bad. We don't. I haven't taken a whole big picture of the carousel and the mountain table pieces of it, but we're changing most of these. But I'm looking because the probability that you got any way to spot them is where we're at now. But I think the city council needs to take a workshop and just look at it. Everyone says you've got good, can't work, and then the project stops there. And they would say, oh, what extent of planning to change, it will make a lot. So I think the framework to address that is by February, it's a new wing, the entire plan. And then identifying priorities, what needs to change, and by June, kind of still in process. And by October, and by the following March, start having some semblance of a plan of how much we need to change. How we see that, because it might not be as sensitive as I think. It might be that the earthquake change, it might still be relevant, but most people take pictures.
Original plan need revision. General plan was twelve round, and it's completed, and it was completed in nineteen ninety-two. This can be a test of this back in its last thirty years, then work with amendments. But amendments are like patches, and they're not as comprehensive as a really solid review. Case in point, last week's planning condition meeting, new grocery store was planned. We were in a discussion about that project. A couple of issues arose, one regarding the shading of the parking lot. And the city planner explained to the people present that the applicant had put as many trees as required by nineteen ninety-two general plan. So additional shading did not be requested. Similarly, similarly, there was a discussion about replacing the traffic signal at the intersection with the roundabout. For the same reason, because in nineteen ninety-two, the general plan does not include roundabout to that particular intersection in our population plan, it cannot be requested by the developer to provide. It's clear that the general plan needs a revision.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you very much. Um, yes, thorough plans are expensive. And to help that, our caving money, such as the funding money, so that it can help work on that. Our plan is so old, I like to say it's almost halfway to Medicare. And it was created for a very different time and a very different climate, both economic in terms of size of the community and in terms of the weather, since it was ninety-three up to date in the middle of October. We are not living in the same world that we lived in until nineteen ninety-two. In addition, as the plan gets older, we open up more vulnerabilities to the point where our plan will not be internal, what's called internally consistent, which is that all of the elements that make up the plan, traffic and housing, and those have to be internally consistent with all the other components of the plan. And when they are not, they open up their door for the state to be sued. So just from a good business perspective about risk litigation, as well as the clear voice that we're hearing in the community about the need to have a community conversation about our direction. I would say that we should definitely be working towards prioritizing and the funding and the creation of a new general plan.
Thank you. All right, Michael.
Yes, I would agree. The general plan is old. In fact, I was here in nineteen eighty when we actually started the general plan at that point. And so it finalized in nineteen ninety-two. And as expressed, it's a old document for a time that's gone, is gone now. And the few things that have developed within the community, the passage of Measure A. There's a lot of things that we have to take into consideration when we get ready to start looking at the possible expansion or updating of the general plan. My belief is, when we were back in nineteen eighty-eight, working on the general plan, at the time, the we didn't look at constraints of the community carefully enough. And it was just, let's just plan out a city without constraints. When I refer to constraints, I'm talking about sewer, water, drains, facilities, and roads as far as the major things to plan around the city. So I would get involved, if I get elected, I would be very active in that whole process. Because there's a, there's a, there's a sequence that we need to do to make sure that we cover things to make any type of development affordable and efficient. Anybody can engineer anything. It's just a matter of how much it's going to cost. And that gets into the affordability of housing, that gets into the affordability of downtown development, et cetera. So yes, the general plan needs to be updated, but we need to do it carefully and be proactive as far as all the constraints involved in the city.
Thank you. All right. So our next question.
Having trouble hearing someone else, so please, especially in the back.
So I'll take, let's, we'll take a moment to.
Push the lights up.
Get the audio down.
Can you hear me now? Better? How's that?
Terrific.
Hello?
Much better.
I can hear you.
And our online participants, if our online participants are having difficulty hearing or want to let us know that the sound is now better, you can also put that in the comment or chat. Want to make sure that everybody can hear. All right. So now, now we're really ready for the second question. And that is, and we're going to start with Richard on this. What is your vision for downtown and how does sustainability factor into that?
So I think. Too much? There we go. Okay. So downtown, I think what downtown is going to be is really up to the residents and the businesses. City council's role here is to provide a framework and some kind of structure to allow people to innovate and try what they want downtown. The structure I kind of like is the town square idea. I think pandemic opened that up in a way that we didn't consider or even attempt prior. Except for once a month, and now it's more a regular thing. I like the alley activation plan that's currently in progress. I think that the park, I think it's twenty-one Main Street is the address. Needs to be completed so that we have a more contiguous flow between Main Street, the alleys, and all the buildings that kind of connect to that. I think downtown really needs to be people-centric and walkable. And right now, we're kind of a weird mix that kind of doesn't give us really good car-centric, doesn't give us good people-centric, but really we want people to come and visit. So we have to start planning it from a people-centric approach rather than how is, how's the car circulation going to be? Because it's really, it's about getting people to stop, not drive around downtown. But I think downtown is more than just Main Street. And I think we might want to look at extending the form-based code or allow some provisions so it'll flex outward.
And. Thank you for your answer. And Albert, the floor is yours.
The downtown is an asset. Maintaining and preserving our downtown supports sustainability. Preserving what is requires less than building anew. Downtown is an existing historic downtown. And downtowns such as ours generate more, more revenue for locality, in this case, the city of Winters, than other areas in the city, with the exception of freeway commercial in Winters. These are trends that you see nationally by sort of, you know, reading and seeing. Articles about downtowns that are studied. I think it would be good to intensify our downtown, the downtown, downtown area. There are several buildings in our downtown area with second floors that are not used. That's because there are structural issues and other issues with their construction because of their age that needs to be redone. But it's expensive to redo, find the capital, and do the investment to do that. And as a city council member, I would like to collaborate with the owners in the, in the, in the downtown area who own those buildings to, to, to find ways to sort of make our downtown buildings become more, more livable and be able to expand services into that so that it becomes a full two-level downtown.
Thank you for your answer. And Lisa, the floor is.
Thank you. For the downtown, it's definitely the jewel in the crown of Winters and has been promoted as such and has gotten a lot of press and coverage for that. People do like to come into downtown. However, the buildings do need to have some renovation. It is expensive. One way in which city councils and cities can help with folks is working with the downtown business association to find funding sources. In many cases, if you need to do earthquake renovation for those upper floors, you can, for example, get what's called soft story renovation money, which is to renovate upper floors for housing using getting earthquake retrofit funds. And there are funds for that through California. That would also have the advantage of reducing vehicle miles traveled by putting some housing right in downtown. And it is also true that we should be looking broader at our downtown as a whole and looking at it holistically instead of as a collection of historic buildings, but as a place and working with our community members and our downtown business association on what that place looks like and how it can serve both us and the folks who like to come and visit us. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael.
Yes, I'm running for city council because I believe in what happened prior to where we are right now. And that is, there was a great downtown master plan that was developed that I support and I want to encourage. And there's also the Grand Avenue plan that was done. There's the parking master plan that was completed that everybody contributed to. Those are great plans that I'd like to make sure that go forward. And I'm going to support whatever we have to do in order to continue that process for developing the downtown and bringing economic development to the area. There's, the older buildings obviously could use the renovation, whatever. But we also have to create demand for the downtown, for those businesses to succeed. Because to just go out and renovate right now and really, we've experienced when we opened a hotel that the demand is quite not there. So the synergy is coming, and we just got to keep pushing and keep pushing in order to make it happen. But I believe in the downtown master plan. I think it's a great document, and I support it, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you. Carol.
Yes, many of the same ideas I've had also about renovating the second story and finding some partners to help us with financing those really large expenses. There's also, I mean, we have a pretty thriving downtown now, and I'd like to see that continue. We kind of came back from COVID and survived that pretty well, I think. And it's become a lot more pedestrian friendly. I'd like to see that continue. And we seem to be managing the whole parking issue a lot better than we had before. And there's also the sustainability in terms of being a good steward of the environment. So I'd like to have businesses, you know, renovate and become more efficient with their water use and electricity and composting and all those things that make us friendlier to the climate and our planet. So those are also sustainability issues that I'd like to help businesses do a better job of. I've also noticed that a lot of businesses are having problems keeping staff and hiring staff. So maybe partnering with the schools to have training, mentorship, to bring in people that can help support businesses and make sure that they're able to stay open. So I think that's, yeah, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Question number three. And let's see, and Albert, we're going to be starting with you. And the question is, the city owns and maintains the community center and Rotary Park in the heart of downtown. What's your vision for the aging community center and what steps would we need to take to get there?
The community center is a valuable community asset. And it's used by moderate numbers of people in the community as well as entities from outside the community for a number of events, from weddings to wedding receptions, local theater, voting. It's a prime location in the city. When the Peter Creek restoration project was envisioned, the community center and the Rotary Park were to be the main transition and connector points from the downtown into the creek area, and that has happened. Yes, it is old, being almost sixty years old, youthful in comparison to some of the nearby buildings. But as a design and building professional of forty-plus years, I believe it has good bones. With reprogramming, modernization, renovations, and remodeling, it will be to conserve the community for another century or more. Demolishing and building anew has a far greater environmental impact than reuse and would cost much more. The potential use for it would be a commercial kitchen. Could be rented to local producers, which has been something the community has looked for. And having an up-to-date facility, the building would be more efficient to operate and generate income and make it more affordable for community use.
Thank you for your answer. Lisa, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So the Rotary Park and the community center is an amazing space, really well-used. Trinity's vessel is one, really a good, most recent example. And it is a great transition point between the creek and. And it is a great transition point between the creek and the downtown. It's also really a large space and, to some extent, underutilized. So I do think that what needs to be done is looking at the potential for what we can do with that property that could be renovation for the 21st century and using it with an expansion of use. It could also be that it would be more cost-efficient and more viable to replace it. And if we're doing that, we can also take a second look at parking. Potentially even put in a parking garage in that site to accommodate more cars and support the Parking Master Plan and the downtown, and actually gaining a bit of a view corridor over Peter Creek. Those things are expensive. It takes community will and community funds. But the right place we start is by really doing a good evaluation of what we have and what we can do with what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michael, really quickly, before we go to you. Aaron, I'm hearing a bit of a ring. And I don't know if there's a Goldilocks setting on the sound. I just want to make sure everybody can enjoy the answers we're hearing. All right. Great. Can everybody, I think I can hear me coming through there. All right, so Michael, go ahead.
Yes, no. I agree. The community park and Rotary Park is a great asset for the city. And at this time, I would believe in the next five to 10 years that that asset's going to be there, that if we, as the rest of the downtown will develop out, it'll become more and more valuable. And I believe at that point, when there's more and more income coming in, that there'll be more opportunities to do something as far as maybe upgrades or do some other modifications or do some other types of planning around it. But right now, that's, to me, that's just a great asset to have. It invites people to come to the downtown. I think it's underutilized also. I think it could use some upgrading. But I also think that we need to get some more development, economic development within the downtown of some of the other private properties in order to create some additional wealth and additional synergies for people to get to the downtown and start creating some value that therefore it would be a lot easier to do something more with that particular piece of property. But I would not jump out and say, let's go out as a community and start investing in that until the private sector starts doing more and more to the downtown.
Thank you. And let's see, and Carol?
Yeah, I agree that it's a great, central, vibrant part of our community. We have, I mean, the outside space is really well-used and beautiful. And we have the back patio and amphitheater for theater performances. It doesn't, you know, it's a dated building. It needs a lot of love. The kitchen definitely needs to be renovated so that it can be a commercial kitchen that we can actually utilize that way. Because right now, it's not even permitted to really cook food in there. You know, all this is going to take money, obviously. The, that chair and storage shed that's on the, between the building and the path is really ugly, and it really blocks the entryway to the nature park. So it'd be, I would love to see that changed somehow. I don't, not sure how you would do that, but some innovative idea to get rid of that shed or at least boost it up a little bit to make it more attractive. It's just a great focal point for the community. And I think if we made it more inviting, maybe we could, like, it is underutilized, so maybe putting some kind of divider in it so that she can use smaller space. They have done some great stuff. The HVAC has been replaced, as we speak, I believe, this week. Lighting's been upgraded. So there has been some energy upgrades then to the building. So just more along those lines until we figure out if more huge things are necessary.
Thank you for your answer. Richard, the floor is yours.
So I think we all agree that we want to keep the community center. And really, our two options are, are we going to remodel what we've got or are we going to build a new one, either in place or somewhere else in town? Yeah, it's underutilized, which means we have excess capacity for somebody else to utilize it. I think there's possibly an opportunity for some sort of public-private partnership where we have a 99-year lease with somebody who wants to come in and use that very desirable location to run some kind of business that still facilitates the use of the community center. And part of the agreement is, we need to still have access as a community to run the events that we want. Don't really get to put a bunch of a fuss because you're getting a great deal on a really great location. Part of that deal could be that whoever comes in funds the remodel. Expensive, the repairs on his upkeep is very expensive, and we're starting to get a lot of those big-ticket items popping up that need to be paid for. I kind of equate that to when your car starts popping, it's a check engine light on all the time. You know that it's about to get really expensive to keep this thing running. Another option might be co-locating with a sports car, once we ever get that going. I talked to somebody last week that was willing to possibly fund and run that also a public-private partnership. I think whatever our solution is, the long-term plan needs to either have some large new funding source to fund the upkeep and repair or some kind of public-private partnership where we have somebody else coming in and basically paying their rent in the form of a repair.
And thank you for your answer. Onto question number four. And in order to meet its greenhouse gas reduction goals, the city will need to reduce vehicle miles traveled. What are your ideas for accomplishing this? And Lisa, we're going to start with you on this one.
Well, thank you very much. For those who don't know, I'm currently chair of the Citizen Advisory Committee for YoloGo. And in terms of the broader Yolo question, we certainly are struggling with that issue of BMT reductions as well. For the small community of Winters, there are many ways in which we can work with our regional partners to achieve some of these reduction goals. Some of those run around transportation and circulation patterns. So we have a lot of changes to how traffic moves through the community, and we can look at that as a way to reduce BMT miles as well. In addition, we can make sure that we're working really closely with YoloGo to make sure that we have good access to transit, micro-transit, and backbone transit. And then I talk to many people who are in the community who actually don't work in Winters. They commute out and are the biggest contributors to BMT. And if there was a place where they could stay here and work as a co-work place, many of them would not need to be doing that travel and would make a huge reduction in BMT miles traveled and in traffic circulation. And so I definitely favor the rise of remote work and in looking at how we can create a partnership to get a co-work space.
All right. Thank you. And Michael?
Yes, right along those lines. And that's part of the downtown master plan for, to build out and do the downtown, do the mixed-use type of products, projects where you have residential collaborative spaces below, retail below. Obviously, because most of our residents that are living here in Winters actually commute. So that's going to be very hard. So what we can do to reduce that is providing opportunities for the downtown. And that's kind of one of my big things is I like to see is some mixed-use projects where people don't actually have to drive. They can walk and utilize spaces below, collaborate spaces for businesses where people can come and work now that we're into Zoom and we don't have to travel. I believe all those things will be a big plus and will actually help bring down the gases. And so that's what I would be promoting. That's what I've been seeking out, trying to do, is to develop out the downtown in order to reduce the traffic going out of town.
Thank you. And Carol?
Yeah, I agree that, you know, getting more jobs in town so people don't have to leave town to get to work. Work where they live and vice versa. I'd like to see a lot more bike parking downtown, including e-bikes. We have a lot more people using those these days. Improving our bike lanes and pedestrian walkways. And we have some good ideas on connectivity in neighborhoods so that people can easily walk between neighborhoods without having to get into their cars and drive. I'd like to see a lot more kids feeling comfortable walking or riding their bikes to school. Maybe getting that Active for Me program that I started at the Rometre site, back into play and bringing it over to Wagner. So a lot of parents are driving with kids just if he walks to school. We can make things safer for them and get them more comfortable in walking and riding a bike. That would be a great asset. Also, the 505 projects, making, say, pedestrian bike walkway for El Rio residents to get into town without having to drive. Similarly, on Grand Avenue, there's a sidewalk improvement project that was in the works. Both of those need funding, but the planning efforts have been well along the way. Just more pedestrian-friendly walkways and things that will encourage people to get out of their cars and providing more jobs will definitely help along those lines. Thank you.
Thank you. And Richard?
So our current Climate Action Plan and how we're implementing our growth plan kind of contradict each other right now because the Climate Action Plan wants us to reduce vehicle miles traveled, but we're building homes and really no jobs. I think it's sort of having a complete overview of what our plan is and where we can fix it really comes into play here so that if all of the elements are mutually supporting, we don't have these competing interests between two elements of the plan. With what we've got right now, I think we can do two things. First one is increase walkability. And that's not just a place to walk, but a place to walk to. We can do that through the mixed-use development that everyone's kind of talked about. We encourage more of that. We can get people sort of out driving to Lorenzo's or to Davis or to Vacaville or driving to go out to eat. So they're walking to some little shop to get their essentials. Tracks Farm Stand downtown that pops up a couple of days a week is kind of a good example of what that might look like on a small scale if they don't have a facility for it. The other one is decrease density. We've got like 800 homes and no jobs, and they're all half million to three-quarters of a million dollar homes. So to afford that house, you've got to drive. And that is an 80 to 100 mile round trip. Yeah, complete plans, kind of consider all that and incorporate all of it into a way that's actually achieving our goals instead of just checking a box of, yes, we have a plan.
Thank you. And Albert?
All good, solid ideas on how to reduce mileage and greenhouse gases. But again, it's another reason for us to be looking at the general plan and looking at the overall plan as to where things are allocated to for zoning. My thought is that right now, our industrial and commercial space that's been allocated in the general plan is approximately 11 or 12 acres, falls mostly in the floodplain. Over the years, many solutions have been looked at to solve the problem. But solving floodplain issues is very, very expensive. And as such, no solutions have come to fruition. So we have no space to attract larger companies that might provide the kind of jobs we want to attract. Providing usable space for firms to be able to provide employment, people could live and work in Winters and buy pyramids, thus causing less greenhouse gases to be emitted. In addition to this, it would provide for an improved community life for the individuals who are traveling less and spending more time in the community. So I believe it would enrich the community by having people stay here.
Did you say that time? All right. Great. All right. Thank you. And let's see, before we hit question number five, I'll just, I'll check in with our tech crew, who really are doing an amazing job. I really appreciate what you're doing. And let's see, do you want just a minute to figure out where the pop's coming from?
No.
All right. All right. So question number five. So, "In light of recent discussions about affordable housing, senior housing, application of the inclusionary housing ordinance and zoning, what are your ideas for how to maintain Winters' character and increase affordable housing opportunities?" And Michael, we'll start with you on this one.
Well, that's a really difficult one because the process for doing any type of development is extremely difficult with the CECL requirements and everything else. Just in development alone, it's very expensive and a lot of uncertainty goes with it. In my past, I was involved with probably close to 200 to 300 affordable-type units. I did a lot in Davis as far as limited equity co-ops. I've done some Habitat for Humanity. I've done some restricted deeds for sale units so that the appreciation can only go up so much. So there are some things that we can do from what we did in the past to do that. But the main process as far as trying to develop out new projects is something that we all have to take a look at, at the state and in the city because it's extremely complicated. And so I'm not sure at this time I can say, well, this is how I do it. It's something that we all have to look at very closely. As far as the inclusionary zoning that goes with it, I believe that's, we've had it and I've dealt with it in the past. And I think it's important that we have it in order to ensure that we are going to get some affordable housing. But to just say we're going to get a housing tract that's affordable, that's going to take some doing.
Thank you. And Carol?
Yes, Mike's talking about the hardest nut to crack is the very low and low affordability units. And I hope, you know, you need more options, townhouses, duplexes, which is going to... We have a very little infill area left to play with. So maybe looking at rezoning some of that so that we have some options that might help us to facilitate more affordable units being built would be useful rather than all single-family homes. It's a really, as Mike says, a very complicated situation and it's not anything that's going to be done easily. I'm hoping, you know, we can maybe investigate more grants and other programs that we can partner with agencies and provide incentives to make it affordable for builders to make money and also lend the town some great places to add those affordable units. And definitely having them mixed throughout town and not putting, you know, all the apartments in one neighborhood and there's no lower-income units mixing with other single-family homes. I'd like to see things more diverse citywide, so.
Thank you. And Richard?
So really, there's two types of affordable housing. There's uppercase affordable housing and lowercase affordable housing. And what I mean by that is uppercase affordable housing is like the affordable housing industry, which is all the HUD grants, your global housing authority, in lieu of fees. It's a whole industry built around building houses with these supplementary funds. And it just don't work because we're sitting here talking about it year over year. So I think we need to look at ways, how do we change, not supplement the cost of building a house, how do we change the math to build the house? And actually have lowercase affordable housing, which what we all mean when we talk about houses that people can actually afford to buy. There's a company that is back east. They were using 3D printing, which I think is, sounds absolutely crazy, but apparently it works. And they were able to build a house in a place that usually gets $600,000 for homes and sell it for $299,000. It cost them $20,000 in materials, three personnel, and eight days, which was 40 hours of the machine actually running. And these houses looked really nice. They blended in perfectly with the character of the town. And I think it's really looking at market-based solutions so that we're not trying to do the same thing over and over with the same batch of money that we're all competing for, which just isn't giving us the results we want.
Thank you. And Albert?
Let's take a look at the historical era of Winters, which street could provide a network serving in mix of housing types, single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes, and other small living, multi-family units. This is the way cities across the US were developed up until the end of Second World War. And it's the way the old part of Winters sort of came to be developed with the mix of these types of housing. Today, urban planners talk about this mix of housing as a missing, or lack of housing, as the lack thereof, as the missing middle housing. The mixing of housing types provides for opportunities, provide... The mix of housing types provide opportunities to provide housing at various levels and costs. And Winters develops this system... And winters develops this historical pattern of development should be replicated to create neighborhoods with various levels of affordability.
Thank you. And Lisa?
As a housing community developer professional by trade, I have to say, well, this is the hardest question on the list. Have you been out there looking for housing, you or your children are, or they are afraid their rent will go up? You know what this feels like firsthand. And I'd love to say there was a single-size solution that would make that work, and the answer is there's none. The legislature's even gone so far as to give certain housing authorities an opportunity to develop a commercial-based mixed-middle housing, and that has been very, very tough to do.
Supporting the progress.
And a large part of that has to do with just the entire complexity of the entire industry. One component of this has been our reliance on the single-family suburb since World War II. So yes, returning to more walkable, compact neighborhoods with a variety of housing type does help that. And a huge underused or potential resource in the winters are the second and third stories of downtown, which with the right partners and the right design package would give you some smaller infill unit types. And there are lots of opportunities with underutilized large lots or deep lots where there is an opportunity for some infill housing to go in. What we really need to do is activate the housing element that we've built and then create a playing field and invite the partners in that are going to help us make the best deals that we can to get the deepest affordability.
Thank you. And we are just about to the last question of this first part, and so, but a couple housekeeping things. This is last call for anybody who is here in the room or online who wants to submit a question for the community Q and A. So if you're in the room, please let Lynn and Chris, our question gatherers, know and flag them down and give them your card. If you are online, either on Zoom or on the Winners Express or Democracy Winners Facebook pages, now's the time to put your questions in either the chat for Zoom or the comment thread for Facebook. And again, y'all are doing heroics with all the sound and running multiple online platforms over there. And so if there's a little hiccup with any of the mics, if, we want to make sure everybody can hear each other, and so we might just indicate that somebody just slide their mic over to somebody else if one of the microphones starts having a problem when somebody is speaking. So, all right, so we're going to go back to the, to our far-left for the order, for the last of these questions. And so this one is, "There's often a diversity of opinions on city council. How do you interact with people with whom you don't agree and how do you anticipate that playing out on council?" So Carol?
Well, I'm all about building consensus. I've been on multiple boards and committees and working for the city, dealing with public on a day-to-day basis. All about listening and respecting people's opinions and being open to different ideas. So that we follow through with in our council. It also includes letting the public feel more welcome and welcome to ask questions. And there's no dumb question. There's, and you can't always agree on things, but you can always treat people with respect and acknowledge that everyone has the right to voice their opinion and should feel comfortable speaking up and not feel intimidated that what they have to say isn't as important as the person sitting next to them. So I, yeah, that's, it's all about building consensus and respecting people and moving forward from there.
Thank you. Richard?
I didn't actually realize we had a disagreement in city council after the poll vote certified of. So as far as talking to people that I disagree with or they disagree with me, I actually enjoy it. I think that when you do that, you just talk to them, you focus on the issue, you focus on the facts. It's not about the messenger, it's about the message. And I found that we seem to have a lot of agreement on what we want to do in town, but how we want to do it is what people kind of seem to want to fight about. And council works best when it's balanced. We've got a pretty good balance right now. Obviously, that's going to change just because the people are changing now. We don't know who's going to land where. But when your ideas are challenged, you get to see the weaknesses in your ideas and then you can improve upon that. When you have a group that works together, that happens kind of seamlessly. There's, I was a tanker officer initially in the Army, and so Patton's kind of a little bit of a hero for me. He's got a good quote, I think it lies here. It said, "Everyone is thinking alike, someone's not thinking alike." I think that's kind of how we have to run city council and make sure that we are challenging the ideas that are presented to us so that we come up with the best solution.
Thank you. And Albert?
The main task of the city council is to legislate and oversee the city and citizens.
Hang on, we're going to give you an extra, hold on. Lisa, would you mind sliding your mic over to Al? And then we'll switch them back. All right. We are ready.
All right. The main task of the city council is to legislate, oversee the city's and its citizens' health, safety, and well-being, improve water, and create safe streets and other services. Despite differing opinions, I believe, I believe it is important to work together collaboratively to benefit, to the benefit of the community as the city council works with the community. Working collaboratively requires having respect for those with which one works regardless of diverse opinion. When different opinions occur, it is important to have a path of discussion that remains open and to attempt to achieve commonality. Our community is too small to allow differing opinions to become an obstacle to the well-being of the community.
Thank you. And let's slide the microphone on Dan. Perfect. And Lisa?
Thank you. I think that's a great question. Currently, I serve on the planning commission. I see I'm chair of BAC America as well. And we also have a variety of diverse opinions on the planning commission, but as many of the members have said this evening, we're very focused on what is for the good of the city. And it is good to have that discussion from the varying viewpoints so that you can actually find the best path forward. That might not always be my path, might not always be the person that I'm disagreeing with, it might be a third alternative. But if we're not having that discussion and looking at it from a full 360, then we're not going to be able to make good decisions for the community. And I'm blessed to be able to have that practice with the planning commission and with the other boards I've served on. I also serve in a national capacity, who followed national news for a while, well, tried to sit in a room with 49 representatives from every state in the country to agree on housing policy and find a coordinated path forward. And you can see I've had a lot of practice in being able to work with a variety of folks look forward to it. It's always a great discussion.
Thank you. And Michael?
Very good question. And just to start with, compassion, respect is critical in any type of board. I was fortunate to serve nine years on the school board just recently. And yeah, we're going to have disagreements. That's part of our job. But if you treat your fellow board members with respect, compassion, encourage them, the same with the community. I mean, we're all going to have different opinions. We're all going to have different ways of doing things. And what we need to do is make sure that we are respectful for anybody's coming up to you asking you for certain things. I believe in the process. As a council member, and we treat it very similar to as a board member on the school board, we have one employee, that's our city manager, and we're overseeing that city manager and the job that she's doing running the city. And so I respect the process. The process of somebody having a problem, if they haven't talked to the city manager or someone else, coming up to the city council, I need you to do this, I'm going to just ask that individual, please talk to the city manager first. That I think that's important in running the city and being involved with the city. I believe in the city manager, given that city manager the kind and the respect to doing the job, we oversee that.
Thank you. So that wraps up our initial part. And so in just a second, we're going to take a five-minute break and the planning committee is going to finish the, putting the finishing touches on the questions for the community Q and A session. And so we'll reconvene then, and when we come back, we'll pick up our order right where we left off. And so Richard, you'll start and we'll go down the line from there. So thank you to the candidates. Thank you to all of you who are here and online, and we will be right back in just five minutes. Welcome back to the City Council Candidates Forum. And I know I promised that Crystal was going to be moderating the second part, but my name is still Kate Lattish. So Crystal is doing a great job of working out some of the tech things. And I also want to thank Erin Gertz of the Winners Express and Taylor Beulie of the Express, who have also been making, really doing a terrific job with a difficult situation in getting this onto several platforms as well. All right, so we are on to the community Q and A portion of this. And thank you so much to everybody who's here and people who are online who submitted a lot of really great questions. So we have a selection of them here. For this portion, so that we can get to as many questions as possible, candidates are going to have one minute per answer. And it'll be the same drill with the numbers will go from green to yellow when we hit the 15-second mark. And Brian will hold up a card, and when your time is up, Brian will hold up the end card and the numbers will turn to magenta and we'll move on to the next candidate. And we'll be going down the row again. And so we are going to start with Richard this time. And once again, all candidates will have an opportunity to answer all questions. So our first community question is, "How can we better serve our Hispanic community?"
I think we can do that, same term, helps if I turn this on, yeah. Quite partnering with the Hispanic Advisory Council. I think they have a better understanding of what kind of unique needs the Hispanic community might want. I don't think that we treat people necessarily all that different though, based on, you know, how they identify or what they look like. Everyone should be generally treated the same, given, offered the same opportunities. But if we'd be anything, it would be partnering Hispanic Advisory Council and any unique needs that it might be.
Thank you. And Albert?
How can we serve the Latino community better? I think the city as a government needs to publish more of its documents, it tends to spread news. It was the Hispanic Advisory Committee who sort of got the government to do a two-sided water notice. One thing I would like to see is to invest in a system that can send out text because the Latino community doesn't use, it does text. People use smartphones. And so if we can be able to broadcast up to that community, just like the fire alarms go off in the county, go to our phones, there's a technology that'll allow us to communicate that part of the population directly.
All right. Thank you. And Lisa?
Thank you. That's a great question. So partly, when you receive a certain amount of federal funds, you're actually required to do translations into dominant languages in the community and to identify what would be considered critical documents to make those translations. And I don't know how much of that is happening here because I don't often see a lot of our documents translated into Spanish. When it comes to the emergency system that Al was referring to, that actually has two components, the emergencies and community notifications, and it has an internal translation. So one thing that the city could do without any additional cost actually would be to use that community notification system for more things to reach more people. And finally, I'd like to say that things may be available to people, but if there's been a traditional way in which people felt they're not included, then you do have to think about how you want to bridge those connections to reach people.
And thank you for your answer. And Michael, the floor is yours.
Again, going back, being on the school board, we have an awful lot of outreach to the Hispanic community. What I would encourage and what I would say at this point is, we need to do as a community, reach out and get them to get involved. I mean, we can only provide so much. If we can't encourage, if we can't get them to come and be involved in the community, it's very, very hard. I think being Hispanic myself, you have to make that step. You have to come out and you have to get involved. So reaching out, encouraging the Hispanic community to get involved with everybody and get involved is the most important thing in my mind, to get some more interaction with the community. So encouraging to get involved, to reach out, to participate, that's a big thing.
Thank you. Carol?
Yeah, I think we need to be generating more translations and materials. I really missed the city water bill insert, and that was great because it was great information in Spanish. We now have the city manager's update, which is great, but it's in English. And also kind of going where the Hispanic community tends to, like, rise, partnering with organizations that have done a good job of interacting with the Hispanic community and, you know, working with them to do more outreach and when we're trying to promote things, going to places where the Hispanic community is already meeting, churches, RISE and schools do a great job of doing English and Spanish. So going where they are and working with them on places that are convenient for them rather than keeping in mind different hours that people work and how to accommodate those access issues.
Thank you. All right, our next question is, "In what ways do you see winters residence or city infrastructure vulnerable to the impacts of climate change such as heat, wildfire, and flood? And what is an example of something the city can do to help?" And Albert, we'll start with you.
Well, in terms of fire, I believe like the west sides and the south sides of the community are exposed to Peter Creek and Dry Creek where wildfire can sort of come in and sort of jump into the city. That's a vulnerability. I think probably more policing of those areas to sort of keep the weed abatement. Weed abatement programs like they have in other communities that have good fire abatement programs to sort of help homeowners and landowners sort of keep the fuel down. That's one that always worries me. Water, water seems to be, feels like a vulnerability, but looking at the data, we're in pretty good shape if we get some rainfall over the next year.
Thank you. And Lisa?
Yes, I think we know that the wildfire risk is there. I think the city's done a good job partnering to do early back burns in order to actually move that perimeter further away from the city. But that also means that we really, really need to look at how we grow and where we grow and that we need to make sure that our town is remaining a compact and walkable because that also means we will not have to extend our fire line perimeter out and be overextended, which would be a big vulnerability. And while our aquifer has been pretty well right now and our subsidence is super minimal, it does depend on the ability to get at least some decent rain. But long-term drought means that when first rains come, you're at more risk for flooding. So making sure we have good drainage and that we're thinking about those things really matters. And one of our biggest vulnerabilities is infrastructure due to heat and its impact on our roads, our wiring, and our vehicles.
Thank you. And Michael?
Yeah, very, buffer zones, obviously, and the re-abatement within the city and the buffer zones as we're currently doing right now in expanding to Texas City. Going back to infrastructure, yes, we have to take a look at some of our dated infrastructure
Going back to infrastructure, yes, we have to take a look at some of our dated infrastructure. And water system is a concern of mine, and that is, we have defermentism on a lot of the older parts of town that we need to set aside funds in order to make those improvements, capital improvements, to make sure that we have the hydrants available for in case of any type of fire. So, I would say that we need to invest in some of the older parts of town and the capital improvements to those areas in order to ensure the safety of the community.
Thank you. Carol?
I think, yeah, fires kind of appear most in most people's minds. I wouldn't even be fortunate that fires have not been close to town. But the fires that do happen outside of town really impact us because of smoke and air quality and just taking care of people when those situations arise, so that we can get people in safe spaces where they're able to not be vulnerable to health issues because of bad air. So, making sure they're inside and have filters, whatever they need. Waters, we're looking, yeah, we need rain to keep us going there. And we have planning for making sure that we have fire protection capacity. When we build the wells, we have much more well capacity than we actually use day-to-day. But the reason for that is so that if there's a fire, you can plan for a fire and everybody using water at the same time and having enough pressure and everything to manage all those scenarios.
Thank you. Richard?
I think water's probably the biggest one that we're not necessarily managing to the fullest extent to be good. Question I want to know is, what does the addition of one house, what effect does one more house have on our aquifer, the depth of well water in our wells? Nobody seems to have an answer to that. I asked the old groundwater agency when they came to talk to Rotary, and the response I got was, "That'd be a really good thing to know." We don't have that answer quite yet. So, I do agree with Mike that we need to take a look and make sure that our pipes underground in the old part of town are still working and functioning as they should. As far as fire, we work in the state for state active duty, primarily for responding wildfires. And, yes, it's a risk, but I think what we're doing right now is pretty good for how, actually managing it.
Thank you. So, our next question is, what does a healthy relationship between the city and school district look like? If elected, what is your role in that relationship? And Lisa, we will start with you.
No matter what community I'm in, the question of town and gown always comes up, and the relationship between the city and the school district. And they are separate entities, but we work in the same place. I think, for some folks who don't know, the Winters School District serves a much bigger area than just the city of Winters. And so, they're concerned with a much larger jurisdiction than we are. But we have a lot of overlapping issues in terms of how we use space within the community and programs that our youth use, and how we may co-locate. And we've had some great joint ventures over the years, and one hopes that with the superintendent and we'll be able to continue to have those relationships and look for more opportunities to work collaboratively within the community.
Thank you. Michael?
A little bit smarter. Take on this one right here. I've been on a two-by-two, when I was on the school board with the city. It's a huge partnership that we need to continue to just be working together, where hand-in-hand. It's very important. And my biggest concern, and one of the reasons I'm running, is because police and protection for our youth is critical. Right now, I'm just shocked to hear some of the things that are happening with the students as far as the drugs and fentanyl and stuff like that. It's here. It's in town. And we need to do as much as we can with the city to protect our youth, and that's important to me. The district, both school district and the city have worked great in the past. We've done a lot of things together, and just want to encourage, more than anything, that we continue to support the students.
Thank you. Carol?
Yes, two-by-twos, I think, are a great asset, and it's a great way to communicate and make sure that everyone's aware of what other partners are doing. And sharing facilities, parks, and schools, and community center, and continuing those partnerships, so that, you know, we're a small town, we don't have a lot of places to do things often, so having the partnerships that we've had in the past, and there's a lot of new players, so, new superintendent, apparently new city manager, so it's kind of good to have improved communication, so things like upcoming rallies don't fall through the cracks and people aren't disappointed. And just continued two-by-twos, I think, are a great asset, and continuing the shared use, and just talking to each other, so that we're all on the same page and aware of what other peoples are doing, and that's going to keep things moving smoothly, I think.
Thank you. Richard?
I think maintaining the partnership is very, very important. What that partnership is going to be is probably going to change again with the new superintendent. I'm hearing from both sides that it's got, have maybe gotten a little strained over the past couple of years. Don't exactly know why, I'm not really, not sure I have any information, but if both sides are feeling like it's getting harder to collaborate, then that probably means there's some kind of communication breakdown. And it might be a single issue. There's comments from somebody from the city and somebody from the school district saying the same thing. But, yeah, just working on collaborating and making sure that we are communicating back and forth on all issues, so that it's not a surprise when there's a stiff one.
Thank you. And Albert?
Well, I'll repeat what Albert has said, that the current relationship should be continued, the two-by-twos, with both bodies meeting and trying to solve problems, talking about problems, should continue. That's a great one, to at least get the issues on the table. And then, as far as the city goes, if the city can sort of extend a hand to provide areas for children to play, and although the soccer league really isn't part of the schools, the children are school age children. And the city does a good job allowing the soccer leagues to be able to use the parks to be able to have sport.
Thank you. All right. So, the next question is, what are your thoughts on the capacity of commercial and housing projects along Grand Avenue and whether that limits development options? And, Michael, we'll start with you on this one.
Hi. I support the Grand Avenue master plan that was developed over time, plenty with multiple committees, a lot of involvement with a lot of the folks here in this room that participated in it. And so, I, as a council member, I will support and do what I can in order to encourage the development of that, for the design and criteria that we have in a master plan. So, yeah, I think it's a great plan.
And?
I'm kind of thinking that we might need to kind of look at zoning and land use with all the development that's happened on the west side of town. There's very little property left to kind of play around with out there, and maybe the idea of shifting some things to allow some commercial development to happen on the west side of town possibly, so that it's not all single-family homes, to allow someone to not have to drive to Lorenzo's to buy a quarter of milk. It'd be nice to be able to stay kind of in the western part of town, so. But the other Grand Avenue plans, I agree with Mike, those have been great ideas for keeping circulation going and having, you know, not all the parking lots right up front in the highway, moving things kind of juxtapositioned on the highway, and so you have some green area up in front to make it more pedestrian and bike-friendly. Those are all great ideas I want to see move forward.
Thank you. Richard?
I also like the kind of Grand Avenue development plan, the design of Grand Avenue itself. I think we might want to take a revisit at, which I know is probably the hardest portion of that, because Caltrans owns the road. I just, I think it needs to be slowed down a lot. It doesn't match the rest. And we've got 128, which starts there, and it doesn't match the rest of the highway, which we talked of turning that into, getting the designation 14th Highway for 128. And if we're going to start introducing shops on the south side and residents on the north side, we're going to have a lot of people crossing. And I hate to see people trying to cross a road where people are just driving down. So, development, yes, the actual design of the road, what the calls for, I think should be revisited against Caltrans.
Thank you. Albert?
Well, again, I guess I'll come back to the general plan and looking at the general plan and doing some decisions on it, just for the fact that, as Richard mentioned, we're going to have people crossing from one side of the highway to the other. We're going to have stoplights, we have a couple of roundabouts scheduled. Perhaps roundabouts are a better way to go, to help traffic flow and to lower greenhouse gases. Development should go forward and, you know, some of the design issues, I haven't seen what the farmstead's going to look like necessarily, but some of the things that have already existed don't quite fall into the way, at least I expected, the fronts to sort of interface with the highway.
Thank you. Lisa?
Thank you. So, for those who don't know, I was actually on the first Economic and Financial Advisory Committee, working on the Grand Avenue design and corridor. And we spent a lot of time with our neighborhood input and actually looking at development in many other communities to get to something that would really support Winters. On the west side of town, although we've grown more like a traditional suburb and less like a compact, walkable community, and so, there is a need for some service and neighborhood-serving retail in the western portion. But like others have said, we need to look at our traffic and our circulation and how the change in population has affected us. And that will take us straight back to the Gera plan, in which both circulation and zoning call, and really, it's a good opportunity for a real community conversation about those two issues.
Thank you. All right. So, we're going to head back to this end of the table. And the next question is, what is the number-one problem facing Winters in the next 12 months? And what is your plan to solve that problem? And you have one minute to answer that question.
Gosh. If we don't get any water, it's going to be a big problem. Hoping our wells don't drop, because we are, we consider it an area of concern, and water conservation is hard sell sometimes. I think, if we have, well, there are some unhoused people in Winters, so it'd be nice to kind of figure out some things to help those people out during the winter months especially. It's all relative, but, you know. Hoping the salmon will come up the creek this year, because we'd like to have them come to our festival, which is going to be in November, so it'd be great to see the creek continue to function and do what it's supposed to do, to bring the salmon up and help them enjoy it.
Great. Thank you for your answer. And Richard, floor is yours.
Number-one issue we're facing is city finance. We, the past 10 years, we spent $2 million of our money, and we needed to for one reason or another, but we funded our reserve fund, and that reserve fund, we're going to open up, was about 1.1 million, I saw it looked. At that run rate, we, if we continue that run rate for the next 10 years, we will not have our reserve fund in below 4% or 5%, depending on how the pre-credit resources are coming in. How would I handle that? Actually, I have an outline, we're running out of time, outline on the website, richard42.com, on how we can address that and start implementing a plan by June. Basically, we need to do a full review of what, where can we have potential savings, try to hold our expenses at the current budgeted levels, and then seek out some new revenue sources to help us create a budget surplus to rebuild that reserve fund.
Thank you. And Albert?
I'm going to have to agree that I think in the next 12 months, especially if we don't have substantial amount of water come, either in a very short period of time, or with winters we used to get, we're going to be very, very strapped, because our water level historically is now at where it was in the late 70s. And so, we will be dropping to a point, still not critical, but close to critical. So, monitoring of the wells has to continue. But, as part of that problem would be, will be the problem of, how do we recharge our groundwater? And the next problem that the city will face is encouraging people to, you know, do elements that help recharge the water, and work with the county to get around the farmers to participate in plugging their fields when possible to recharge.
Thank you. Lisa?
Well, I want to make a note that they save whiskey for drinking and waters for fighting, so I'm going to make that note too. But then I'm going to say that, big issues facing us, and not the biggest, but really big ones, a lot of those are climate-related. It's water, it's heat, it's drought. High heat means that our equipment degrades. If you are running electric vehicles, that's part of what you're doing to mitigate greenhouse gases. Those batteries don't work well in the heat. When we're low on water and we have drought, those have impacts on our community, as the other folks have expressed. And the other really big issue we have is, we are living in precarious times with a precarious economy, and a lot of how we get our city finances means that it depends on how our economy is doing. So, the things we need to do within our community is shore up our community resilience in many different places, and climate and the economy are too.
Thank you for your answer. Michael?
Yes. There's not enough time to answer all the problems. So, just hitting on the big points, I mean, obviously, we can't control the weather, we can't control the climate, we can't control in the near future. But what we can control is the budget and making sure we're fiscally sound, those things we can do. And then, secondly, I want to go back to make sure that we're encouraging, we have the funding for the police department to provide us the security that we need as a community, because, as everyone said, there's, this is a very, very tough time, the recession is in, it's all hard, and we need to be aware of that and be compassionate about that, because it's affectous, it's all. So, my two things is we can control the budget and we can control the funding for the police to protect our students. So, that's what I want to focus on.
Thank you. And this next one, this will probably be our last question, unless we rocket through it in absolute lightning speed. But, here we go, is, how would you encourage more industrial or commercial development or not? And Richard, you have the first go at this one.
I'd actually like to see industrial development happen in a way that supports the existing industries in town. I don't think just any industrial development is going to work. We definitely need to use it, it's underutilized. I think it's seeking out, talking with the businesses that have a need for some kind of industrial support, and seeking out what kind of companies might fill that role, and finding a way to entice them to come and set up shop in Winters that actually help out with a lot of the problems of not having jobs and people having to drive out of town. But, yeah, working with businesses, see what their needs are, and then find a way to entice those people, or people who can fill that role, to our industrial sector.
Thank you. Albert?
Well, again, going back to creating space for more businesses to come and establish themselves, to root themselves here. The kind of businesses I would envision coming to town would be, we have a world-class university 15 miles away, where all kinds of offshoots, I call it agri-tech, because agriculture is in our history, and that's what we do around here. That's a major industry here. That's a major industry here. And agriculture uses all kinds of technology now, similar to what comes out of the Silicon Valley, but oriented towards agriculture. And we need to create a space where these kinds of firms can come here and sort of do their research, build their machines, hire people.
Thank you. Lisa?
Well, I think a lot of really great ideas. There's also the possibility, since we have not so much space, to do large-scale commercial industrial, to do joint ventures with companies and the county. Worked in those kinds of ventures before, and they can be really mutually beneficial. In addition, if we were investing in co-work space, well, remote workers could stay home, more dollars from them would continue to circulate in town, fewer vehicle miles traveled, and maybe incentivizing local commercial. And it gives the opportunity for folks to work in a variety of disciplines, to be in one place and spark off of each other and create brand new ventures that would be winners-based.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes. That goes right back to the general plan update. I mean, infrastructure is going to be critical to encourage anybody to come in any large commercial and industrial pipeline. We have the players around us. Albert mentioned UC Davis, plenty of opportunities to encourage them. But what we have to do is set it up so people can see that we have the potential to come here, widely we come here, great little community, and we have the infrastructure planned out for someone to take a look at and say, you know what, I want to invest in that. But until we have that set up, it's going to be hard to encourage anybody because it's kind of like, well, we'd like to come, but we're not sure how we can get you there. So, starts with the general plan update, make some infrastructure plans to figure out how to provide, and then we can go out and we can seat those companies.
Thank you. And Carol?
All great ideas. Fortunately, I think we actually have the infrastructure, because we put water and sewer all the way out to the freeway and it's where all the commercial and industrial is. So, working with, as Michael was saying, existing businesses to find out where are the needs. I also agree that ag-related businesses or some kind of industry would be a great asset, you know, oil pressing or something to do with lawns and nets, obviously. But it'd be great to keep our ag heritage kind of connected to any new industry or commercial that would be happening in that freeway. So, there's plenty of stock, property out there, but it's something to start with. So, it's a matter of working with partners in the area, encouraging them to come and if we have people that would love to stay in town and work.
All right. Thank you. So, and thank you to everybody who submitted those great questions. And so we're going to move on to the last portion of this, which is an opportunity for candidates to give closing statements. And so we're going to keep with our tradition of going down the line and so...
Two minutes, right?
Oh, hang on. Yes, yeah, two minutes. And you will indeed, as you might have just heard, candidates will have two minutes for their closing statement. And again, you'll have a warning at 15 seconds left. And so, let's see. So, Albert, if you are ready, we'll have you take it away. All right. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you for coming and listening to us, each say our piece and participate in democracy. But I, you know, I think, for me, not need to vote for me because I have vision for the future and how this town can grow and meet its needs and sort of be a model for other valley communities. I was a part of the Keep Winners, Winners during committee, and as part of that, I really saw that we need to preserve what we have. And so, becoming a council member allows me to sort of stretch out and try to work with the community, preserve the community we have. It's very interesting going out and going door to door and speaking to people. And one of the number one issues that I hear from people is their concern for concerning the small-town character of winters. I've had many, many people tell me, they moved to winters from Santa Rosa, Los Angeles, all kinds of places because they like the small-town feel. So, that's become, that's always been part of my philosophy, is to try to preserve the small-town character of winters. But how do we do it? And now, in my research and in doing this and looking at things, I see a path forward in beginning to sort of look at how winter's physical fabric works to move forward and to use it as a jumping block to sort of form the future of the community. Thank you. Vote for Albert by his chair.
Thank you. And Lisa?
Thank you very much. Well, first, I actually want to thank Winners Express, and I want to thank the advocacy of winters or the opportunity to host this. This has been fabulous. I want to thank everyone in the audience and those of you who are watching and taking time out of your night to come here, five people talk to you about a vision for the future. I think that's amazing. I worked in housing and community development in the cities and counties all over the country in these issues as a professional, and usually on the other side, the one putting the community meeting together, the one writing the staff report, the one standing up in front of city council. And I realized that over a career of developing a lot of skills, a lot of knowledge base, working on a variety of boards and as an appointed official, it was really time to take the next step and move into elected office and bring this experience that I have to winters. And that experience allows us to think about our physical space and our programming in a way that allows our community to thrive. During my career, my entire mantra's been every community has a vision of who it is, and our jobs are to allow that community to reach the highest invest version of itself. And that is why I'm running for city council, and that is why I want to continue to contribute to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody also here at the committee. And I'd just like to say that I really enjoy this community. My wife and I are just, we love it. And I gained a lot of experience when I was on the school board. We were very fortunate to have a great board. And I want to thank the community for supporting us in all the bond issues. And I'm quite proud of what we did there as a board to develop out and rebuild the high school and all the other facilities that were ready to pick. I spent a lot of time dealing with those issues with my background in sequel and development and construction and infrastructure design work, that I was able to provide a lot of information, professional help as we were going through that process. But as a board, I thought we did a fantastic job. I would bring that same experience as a city council member, as far as my background in commercial development, economic development, sequel reviews, land management, master yards. I've had all that experience, and I think that's a big plus as far as going forward and dealing with the issues and the vision of what winners is going to be. And again, I want to say I promote and I love what we created as a community, the downtown master plan, the Grant Avenue master plan. Yes, there's some issues there, but overall is a great starting point. The parking lot master plan that everybody's worked on, these are all good ideas, all good plans. And I just want to make sure that if I'm elected, that I can promote those and do whatever I can to encourage the development of those plans. Thank you.
Thank you. And Carol?
Well, moved here 40 years ago to live in a small town. I think it was a very tiny town then, and it's continued to be kind of better and better, more charming. And we're fortunate to live downtown, so we really appreciate the whole downtown pedestrian vibe and all the great stuff that happens downtown. I've been involved in many, many committees over my 40 years here, and I feel such gratitude and just the opportunity to work with the great groups of people, Friends of the Library, Meals on Wheels, PTA. And I really would love to see the newer members of town or people that have chosen not to be involved find a niche for themselves and become more involved in their community. There's so many opportunities for volunteering and being really connected to the place you live and schools, the city can use help at the parks, there's all kinds of places for people to jump in and be involved and get back so much more than what you give. So I really want to find a way of connecting our new neighbors who maybe don't have the time because they're commuting, but, you know, there's a way of pitching in and really getting to know your community and your neighbors. And I really want to foster that welcoming feeling so that everyone feels respected and valued and can be part of continuing to help this city grow and become more unique and special. It's a very special community, and I'm really fortunate to be here and live with such great people. And hoping that being on city council, with my city experience for 60 years, I can really add to the mix and make winners a even better place.
Thank you. Richard, the floor is yours.
I think we all want to have a safe, inclusive, sustainable, small-town community to live in. And the way we do that is to have a strong, stable foundation. To me, that foundation is our general plan and the strength for city finances, literally what we want to do and how we want to pay for it. We cannot keep spending more than we're taking in. We have the funds to cover it, we are paying cash, we're not creating new debt. We're doing so, but it's not a sustainable, long-term plan. I think we have a choice, do we want to create a strong town for the future, or do we want to keep trying to use yesterday's solutions to solve tomorrow's problems? My training, education, and experience in strategic planning and finance is something that I think is unique up here. And I think it's something, my ability to hone in on the root of an issue and quantify it so that we can actually measure the best result is something that we really need to create that safe, inclusive, sustainable community that we all want. Thank you, everybody, for coming out here and tuning in online. Yeah, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you all. Want to learn more about me, check out my website, richardforlunners.com. You're here, there's the business cards on the table, it has QR code that'll take you there, or any of the signs around town. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And thank you, one and all. So, we are just at the moment, right before wrapping up, and so this is the opportunity to give some thanks. And so on behalf of the Winners Express and Democracy Winners, thank you to all five of our candidates for participating this evening and for running to serve our community on our city council. And I want to let everybody who's here know, as well as people who are online, that there will be video available. Ultimately, there will be a copy posted to the Express's YouTube channel. And we are, fingers crossed, we're going to work on being able to get the sound for the first part dialed in a little bit better before we post. And we are hoping it will also be available on the organization's Facebook pages as well. And so I'd like to start with the thanks for, with Aaron Gertz and Taylor Bealy of the Express for really being a big help here. And Crystal, Crystal who stepped in with the tech part. And I'd like to thank our many volunteers who are here. And so Brian, who's been keeping us on track here with the panel, so thank you to Brian Bellamy. And thank you also to Lynn Seacrest and Chris Rose for being our questions gatherers. And, see, I'm going to turn around so I can actually face you all instead of, you know, talking out of the back of my head there. I mean, I used to teach, but, you know, it's convenient, I can, you know, advise in the back of my head, but the math is there. All right, hey, look, you're all here! And so, pardon me, Michael, I don't want to run into it, but... And so, I would like to point out that the planning committee, it certainly isn't just me, Shep Harper, who was taking the lead on organizing the community questions, and Crystal Appolato, and so thank you to all of you. And then the very big thanks is to everybody who is here from the community, who's participated in person as well as online. This event would not be possible without you. And so, thank you. And with that, I would like to encourage everybody to be a voter. I appreciate your interest in the topic, and I encourage you to do the next step, which is to actually pass your ballot. And I encourage other people to be voters as well. And so the election is November 8th, and the ballot drop box at Lorenzo's and then our vote center at the public safety building. And so at the beginning, I ask everybody to hold their applause. Now is the time, you can let it out! And so please, thank you all!